I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for a moment of reflection in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, can we have a roll call of members, please?
Mr. Mignon.
Here.
Mr. Francis. Mrs. Erwin Adams.
Here.
Mrs. McGinnis. Mr. Cook. Mr. McCauley.
Here.
Mr. Romanowitz. Mr. Pacifico. Mr. Pappas.
Okay. So we will move right into the bulk of the meeting, I hear. Sue's gonna take over tonight, so let's move right into the presentation.
Sure. Just to kind of set things up a little bit, I appreciate it. And we've been working very hard, I know Sue and Camilla in particular, have been working very diligently on working on planning for the upcoming budgetary cycle. So tonight, we didn't want to review everything, however, we felt it was important to review where we were at with ESSER funding and talk about how ESSER funding with it ending, what impact that has on budgetary planning as we move forward. We also felt like that in the previous year, we had done a very good job of comparing Altoona Area School District and the Altoona, our status to that of the state and local and surrounding communities, as well as comparable school districts throughout the state, so we're gonna highlight that as well. And then also talk about our revenue and expenditure trends, where we're kind of seeing things, obviously with, you can't turn on the news and not hear about inflation and hear about interest rates and all the different things that are out there that directly impact our ability to function as a school district within the financial limitations that we have. So that being said, I will turn things over to Sue. If at any point you have a question or like further clarification or have a comment, please just buzz in and we'll call on you. Thank you.
Thank you. So the presentation is in front of you, is also gonna be on the board, so whichever one you're more comfortable watching, feel free to do that. I'm gonna review a couple of the slides that Camilla presented last committee, the whole meeting, so just to kind of get us back in the right frame of mind and then we'll dig a little bit deeper into where we are. So this first slide Camilla presented to us last meeting, and it reviews our revenue trends and expenditure trends over the last couple of years, basically from the time the pandemic started. So in 2021, we had $110.3 million with the revenue. That is trending up to, we budgeted $127.8 million for the 2324 fiscal year. Expenditures, of course, in the budget year, you match revenue with expenditures, so expenditures are still at 127.8. You'll notice in 2122 and 2223, we did have revenue over expenditures, so we were able to increase our fund balance. The governmental fund balance is listed there at the bottom of the screen. I have a more detailed slide later in the presentation that shows you how that is arrived. So it's basically a combination of the general fund, capital reserve, and capital project funds, which is why you see a little decrease in 2122, even though we had revenue over expenditure. But our fund balance is increasing, which is the positive note, while we are enjoying the ESSER funding. Again, here is the slide that Camilla spoke with last time that shows the $42.3 million of federal COVID relief money that we've been, we've received over the last couple of years. We supplemented about $10 million in our budgets over that period of time to help do improvements such as the planetarium, we upgraded the windows within some of our buildings, we added some additional support services in that period of time to help kids as they were dealing with pandemic-related mental health issues. We also supplanted a significant amount of money, so about $32.2 million of the 42.3 was monies that we supplanted, which means that we use them in place of other funding. So monies, local revenue or other basic ed money that we would have used historically for substitute salaries or the GACTC tuition, we used COVID relief money to pay for those expenses throughout this period of time.
Sue, can I just add a piece to that? So one of the things Sue had highlighted was that during COVID, we did add positions that were grant-funded that we knew would be honeymooning at the end of the 2324 school year closer to September. We are in the process, in fact, we've already have a game plan for maintaining those student services that we feel are vital and bring a lot to the school district, namely our social workers, our student support specialists, and some of those mental health pieces that we feel that doing away with or eliminating would be extremely detrimental to our students K through 12. So we are looking at efficiencies within our total staff allotment to be able to absorb those back into positions that may be retiring or attritioning through numbers and different things, whether it be at the elementary or the secondary level. So I'm happy to report at this point, we do feel as if we're gonna be able to maintain both our social worker at the junior high school, at the high school, our student support specialists in elementary, and the very vital mental health services that we've been able to implement at the elementary level as well. So between a combination of staff attrition, reappointment of staff in terms of where we're allocating our positions, we do feel like we're gonna be able to continue with those enhancements without any kind of impact on the budget overall.
So the next page shows you kind of what the, where our picture is right at the minute. So even though we've been enjoying, that's a poor choice of words, even though we've benefited from ESSER funding for the last couple of years, that is coming to an end in September of 2024. So we need to prepare for the shortfalls that we're currently experiencing in our budget. We're calling them a structural deficit. This screen shows you, or this slide shows you the revenue and expenditures that were in the previous slides, and then I adjusted the ESSER funding out of that picture. So you'll see that our federal revenue funding goes from 18.7 million down to 4.2 million, which is where we were prior to the pandemic. I also adjusted out the supplemental expenditures, those things that we spoke about in the previous slide, some of the extras that we've been doing right at the minute. So we're showing a structural deficit of about $4.4 million. So that, as we go through future committee of the whole meetings, we have some great ideas of some things to be able to cut some of those expenditures, some attrition things that we're gonna be able to take care of that, so we'll talk about that at a future date. I'm gonna move forward into a statewide comparison that compares the Altoona School District to some of the other areas in the state. So this, our current average daily membership ADM is 700, or sorry, 7,515 students. So I pulled out a cohort that kind of gives any other districts within the state that are anywhere between 7,000 and 8,000 students. So this is the cohort that I pulled out. You will notice that we do have declining enrollment, so we've declined about 1.67% in the period of between 2019 and 2022. That is a little above the average for that cohort, but still below the statewide decline of about 1.74%. I think we spoke last year, for those people that are returning to the board, that the state overall is losing population. And Altoona is not an exception there. This next slide compares our current expenditures. Current expenditures are instructional support services, non-instructional services like athletics, student activities, those types of things. It compares current expenditures with other districts, those same districts in our cohort. You will notice that we are significantly lower than our cohort in current expenditures. So about $12 million less than the closest person or closest district. Again, we are seeing an increase in expenditures over that period of time, about 6.44%, which is less than some of the other people in our cohort, but less than the average. The statewide average increase is about 8.57%. And as Brad spoke about earlier, the inflation rate over this period of time is somewhere between 7 and 7.5%. So we are a little bit under inflation with our cost increases throughout this period of time. This slide shows us, and we rank 462 out of 500 when we're looking at current expenditures to average daily membership. So we spend about $14,905 per student in the 2122 year, and that's, you know, that's about $10,000, I'm sorry, about $5,000. That's not even right. About $1,000, I'm sorry, $1,000 less than the people that are closest to us. And, you know, when you look at the state college and some of the other districts, you know, they're $5,000 more per student per average daily membership. So we are taking the money that we have allocated in our instructional budget, and we are stretching it across our kids and providing more education for a lower cost than some of the other districts in our cohort. This revenue slide has a whole lot of information in it. So we rank, if you look at the ranking column, that's third from the right, we rank 57 out of 500 in total revenue. So local, state, and federal revenue, our district is 57 out of 500 with $118,666,937 that we had in the 2122 fiscal year. If you look at that as a comparison to some of the other districts, our average daily membership of 7,500 is, again, considerably higher than anybody else within this cohort. So we are doing more with less than a lot of the other districts within the state. Our mix of revenues is a little bit more complex than everybody else. So if you see, we're 186 out of 500 when you look at local revenue, which is the, in that second column, a second ranking column. So the tax that we receive from our taxpayers is considerably lower than this cohort compared to some of the other revenues. Now, our state revenue, as you see, is higher than everybody else, but that, that revenue mix includes our transportation subsidy. So because we have so many more students, we're transporting a lot more students, so our transportation numbers are higher. It includes our special ed subsidy. Our special ed population is close to 25%, so our special ed costs are higher than a lot of our cohort. It also includes early intervention and adult ed, which a lot of other school districts don't provide those services to their districts. So those monies are within that $70,000 that's there for state revenue. It also includes our plan con money, so the, that far right column with that $80,000, $80 million, that includes our bond refunding that we did in 2122. So we get reimbursement from the state for a portion of our loan payments that we pay on our bonds. Any questions on this slide? There's a lot of data there. Sure.
Talking about we're being all those 2,000 for students.
Yes.
PDE establishes, establishes the tuition rates that we're allowed to charge every May. And if you can give me one moment, I'll pull up our rates. They do take a lot of these expenditures into account when they, when they come up with that, when they calculate that, but if, if Sue can move on, I'll find it and I'll have it by the end. Most of them are employees at the discounted rate. They only pay 25% of the tuition rate to bring their, to bring their kids here. We only have, I believe, five who are paying that live in another district.
All right, so this basic education funding, so I think we've spoken before about the basic education funding formula that the state uses to distribute money to the school districts. So the current formula has been determined to be unconstitutional, and they are working on redoing that. And then starting in 2021, 22, they started offering level-up funding to districts like Altoona that were underfunded based on the distribution of the basic education formula. If you look in the column that's labeled base, B E F, so that's the basic education formula, and for lack of better terminology, that's the amount that we are guaranteed to receive every year from the state. So that's our, that's the base. So you will look, it was steady from, at least throughout, from what the data I pulled, from 2016 through the end of 2021, our basic education base was flat. Then we received a level-up supplement in 2122 and in 2223. That money, that level-up money then rolls into our base to increase that going forward, to bring us level with other districts and how the money's being distributed to them. So in 2324, that money is not included, nor has it been passed in the governor's budget. So we do not anticipate receiving any level-up money going forward. The other component of state funding for basic education is the student-weighted distribution. So every year, as part of the governor's budget, he establishes additional money that he's gonna give to education. So you see in 2016, it was 352 million. In, in last year, in the 2324, it's 1.9 billion. So each school district receives a portion of that money based on their student, student-weighted average. And there's, there's a big, complex formula, including poverty rates, property values and income in the area that establishes what percentage each school district would receive. So the Altoona School District in 2223 received 0.3%, 0.43%. That number dropped to 0.42% in 2324. Doesn't seem like a big drop. That number equates to about a half a million dollars. So the share that everybody's getting, we're getting less just because of the way the formula is and it is distributed. But that shows you kind of where our money is and where our basic ed subsidies are.
And they did not vote to include level-up funding this year.
Correct.
So we're not getting anything of 0.42 of the 1.991 billion. That was a, that was one of the major debates when the budget was being debated and finalized. But level-up was not approved for current school year. And Camilla, being in her divine wisdom, did not budget for a definitive increase. She didn't budget for what we were anticipating for level-up. So we're, we're okay in terms of where we're at with current year budget. We did not budget for that, that revenue source.
What I think, Carl, have you heard? Have they updated how the formulas? So I don't think they've come to even a final conclusion how they're gonna redo.
No, I haven't heard anything.
There were hearings held two or three weeks ago, but there's been no finalized resolution to it yet.
That's. Here's the other slide that has a whole lot of data on it. So currently, equalized mills, so the school district itself taxes, our current real estate tax millage is at, in, well, in the year that we're looking at comparison-wise, in 2122, tax rates were 6.2053 bills. Because the Altoona School District adopted Act 511 years ago, we have supplemental revenue that we receive from local sources, business privilege tax, mercantile tax, amusement tax, the flat tax that we assess every year. That money helps supplement our real estate tax assessments on our, on our homeowners. So if you look at, it's called equalized mills, so if you equalize our mills based on our Steb market value, so the market value that the State Board of Equalization establishes for our, for the Altoona School District and our taxes collected, our equalized mills are 11. So that still ranks us way in the bottom of the 500 school districts. So we rank 488 out of 500 districts when you're looking at equalized mills. So we are fortunate in our area that our businesses, fortunate or not fortunate, depending on if you're a business owner or not, that our businesses help supplement the revenue and the local taxes for the school district. But our homeowners are taxed lower than many other than our comparable districts within our area. So our actual millage rate and the amount that we're collecting is less. If you look at the market value, the Steb market value, we're at 2.5 billion compared to the other districts that are in the lower portion of the, of the equalized mills chart. Also, our, I don't have it on there. I thought I had our average daily membership is on there, but it's not. So, but, you know, regardless of how you look at it, we're taxed considerably lower than many of the other areas in the state. So I'm gonna look and then switch gears one more time, then I'll put the whole puzzle together. So our revenue and expenditure trends, if you look, this is the historical revenue trend from 17 through 2023. The top portion of it shows the revenue and the revenue without ESSER funding. That highlighted pink, for lack of better color choice, shows the money adjusted for COVID money. So you'll see that we went from 18.7 million in 2223 down to 4.2 million. So that shows the adjustments to our revenue throughout that period of time. Our local revenue, we had tax increases as we went into the 201819 tax year, so you'll see the increase in local revenue there. We had a tax increase as we went into the 201920 year. Unfortunately, because of some assessment changes, primarily the Logan Valley Mall and the Jaffa, we lost tax revenue in that year, even though we had changes in our assessed value. The other tax increase you can see in our local revenue is between going into the 2223 fiscal year, we had a tax increase there, which is why locally revenue has increased. We are also very fortunate right at the minute, our earned income tax rates. So that's one of the other benefits of the pandemic is that individual wages increased. So our earned income tax revenue that we're getting into the school district has increased probably close to 3/4 of a million dollars in the last couple of years. Any, you'll note in 2122, as we're going through here, that $80 million that's in the other revenue source, that was our bond refunding, so you kind of have to adjust that out as you're wandering through. And this is a similar slide that shows expenditures for the same period of time. I think it's interesting to see, if you look at the bottom portion of the slide of the expenditures adjusted for ESSER, our instructional costs, our support costs have been somewhat level across those periods of time. And I think that speaks to the district in itself, the instructional teams, the support services, that we've worked very diligently to keep our costs as low as we can. Instructional costs have increased, and much of that is due to contractual agreements with our collective bargaining units. The support services, that's the 2,000 expenditures, they've increased because of contractual agreements with our transportation providers. Also, our utility costs are in that section, so just normal utilities that increased.
Could I ask, moving forward, if we could further maybe break instruction down? I mean, I'd be curious to keep an eye on, on special education, and I know we get beat pretty good there, and it'd be nice to just keep an eye on it.
Absolutely.
To continue to harass, harass our state legislators and whoever. It's a meaningful number, and I think if it was fully funded, we would maybe not be facing a deficit, so.
Yeah.
I think it's an important number to keep in mind.
If I recall, we were, last fiscal year, we were underfunded by over 2 million. Just in special ed alone.
I'm sorry, where, where do, where do all the, for the, for the benefit of the board and for me too? So all the, the special accommodations that are made via IEPs and stuff like that, where does that fall?
Usually in the 1,200s in expenditures, so in the 1,000s. But to be able to, when we break it out, it'll be in 1,200s. 2150s are also our speech, and we contract out a lot of our speech services. And PTOT is a 24, it's more nursing-type services. So there are actually schedules within our, within our last year's AFR that we can present that shows like the total picture of our special ed expenditures.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious. I know a little, little personal insight into, you know, the amount of money we're spending on nurses to be with kids, right, all day? Things like that would be helpful to know. So a little more detail in those areas would be really helpful.
Yes, if we could just take the, the function codes and just break those down.
Absolutely.
Into their subcodes, and we can, absolutely, we can very easily do that.
Yeah, because I think that's, as we look towards the future and we wanna be able to have meaningful conversations with people who make these decisions, it's best that we're all aware of these types of things, because let's be honest, that's, if we can make inroads there, it's, it's to our benefit instead of, not instead of, but in addition to what we're able to just do through, you know, the work that you folks do to find savings and stuff. None of the savings that we could find locally would make up for the savings we could get if they really did what they should do.
Agreed. And this is, it all funnels, so it's starting out broadly, and then our plan is to get into more detail in the upcoming months. Just not trying to have you all drinking from a fire hydrant tonight. While I, before I close, so back to Kelly's question on slide, the comparative current expenditures to the average daily membership, where it's showing our per pupil cost of 14,000. Our calculated tuition rate for this year for elementary is $9,193. And for secondary, it's 11,282. So significantly lower than what our total cost is, but when the, when the state is doing these calculations, they don't include any of the 2,600s, which are building in grounds and our custodial, custodians and repairs within 2,600, and that's also our security departments. So when they formulate the tuition rate, it doesn't include all our costs. So we aren't getting an actual, our per pupil cost for our tuition rate.
So this, this last, this is almost the last slide. So this slide shows, I took the revenue numbers as adjusted for ESSER and the expenditure numbers as adjusted for ESSER. And this shows us a historical trend of our structural deficit. We're getting better, so that's the positive news. You know, the last year, we ended up with a 4.4 million structural deficit, but that's down from the $8 million numbers it was in prior years. So we're getting closer to the goal. So we just need to continue to work on that and see what we can do.
The other piece too, going back to your, to the fund balance slide, you're not seeing a declining fund balance. So what we're seeing right now is actually an increase in our overall fund balance, and that would be the combination of general fund balance as well as the money that we've committed to capital reserve. So it, it's a little bit of a puzzle in terms of how all these pieces play together. But when we are able to realize the revenue over expenditure, we're able to allocate that money to one of our, one of our general fund, excuse me, the, help me out, what am I?
Capital projects.
Or capital projects or capital reserve. So we're in a pretty good spot. Our capital projects or capital reserve, um so we're in a pretty good spot, even though as, as we have a declining structural deficit, which we. Hopefully have a, we have a plan for how we can continue to decline the structural deficit. We are, we are spending wisely, so we are able to realize and we have been able to realize. Revenue over expenditure the past couple of years, which is, we can commit back into fund balance.
Well, and that's the last slide that we have here, so. This slide looks a little bit skewed because we built an eighty eight million dollar school building during this period of time. So the capital reserve, capital project funds that need to be included in fund balance. Happened during this period of time, so these numbers include the three bond fundings that we did to sup- to pay for the building of this school. So that's why it looks like in two thousand seventeen eighteen, which is the year of our first bond. Issue, we had an eighty eight, eighty nine million dollar fund balance. So as the building was built, that kind of dropped it down to normal. Quote unquote, which is where we are in twenty two, twenty three, so as we stepped through that building process. But you can see um where the, the. Total governmental fund balance started to recover. So at the end of twenty twenty one, it was at thirty five point three million. It dropped again in twenty one, twenty two, and then, and but that was mostly because of that, we did some large capital projects that year. Um, and then it's rebounded into the twenty two, twenty three year, we're at thirty seven point four million. So the actual revenue over expenditures throughout that period of time, there was a, a fourteen point seven million dollar decrease in fund balance. However, without S R funding and without some prudence in our spending, um it could have been as much as thirty nine million. Which would have entirely used up our fund balance. So I think that there's, there's a positive information there that we've been able to use a lot of that S R money. And the federal money that was provided to us in a way to help preserve a good portion of our fund balance and to carry us forward. We're closer to where we need to be, and I think that um Mr. Hatch has some great ideas. Going forward that he's going to present to you in the next meeting or two, that kind of gives us an idea of how we can continue to decrease. That structural deficit that we have in our funding. So is there any questions on this slide? That's a lot to absorb, and it looks like accounting magic, but it's not really. So as we step into the next meeting, next, the next committee, the whole meeting is on March fourth. We'll discuss some of those possible reductions that we have to current expenditures. We will have information, the governor's budget proposal that's tomorrow. In April, we'll have some in-depth discussion about those um reductions. We would love suggestions from the board. If you want additional information or have ideas, please pick up the phone and call us. We'd be happy to run the numbers, do the research, see what we can do to um. See if your idea works, I mean, we'd love to have some input. We're going to leave this schedule open in April, on April twenty ninth, to continue to do some research based on questions such as Mr. Mignon's. And then we need to have for our timeline a proposed final ju- budget presentation for you in May. That is all I have. Any questions for me?
Kind of, kind of the approach that we are taking is planning for the now. But also not losing sight of the very near and lengthy future. So we need to look at not only twenty four, twenty five, but also the, the, the immediate three to five years after that. And then long term, um you know, in terms of overall district and community planning. And and there are considerations that we need to look at now to be able to look four, five, ten years down the road. So those are things that we want to start to highlight and just kind of put, these are, these are considerations that we need to look at as we move forward. As we move into the budgetary planning, not just for upcoming year, but for future years as well. And and those are things like, um, you know, some of our, our negotiations and plans that are coming up. We have two of our groups that will be looking at, you know, in, in the twenty four, twenty five school year. So those are some things that we need to consider in addition to other pieces that we don't want to look at. And and again, previous boards, these ladies and previous administration have done a great job of, of. Fixing a lot of things that they could while we had the money to do so. They were very forward thinking and not only looking at infrastructure and buildings, but also curriculum. And all of those pieces and staffing that we, we feel like we're in a pretty good place moving forward. Uh, and we need to continue to think about not just the now, but but moving forward.
Okay, does anybody have anything else to uh discuss, questions? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor? Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.